I'd like to call the February 18th Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Our first order of business is invocation by our county manager, Mr. David Cott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Lord be with the Commissioners tonight in their deliberation and bless them with wisdom and guidance as they address the items on tonight's agenda. Guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness and right thought. Teach us to be generous in our outlook, courageous in the face of difficulty, and wise in our decisions. Father, we pray for our men and women in our armed forces who serve our country with tremendous courage, commitment, and sacrifice. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory. We will continue to thank you and praise you for the blessings you have bestowed upon us. Now with a deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here tonight, hear us in a moment of silence. Amen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Manager, would you lead us in the pledge, sir?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to recognize Sheriff Hans Miller, one of our elected officials and always at our meeting. Thank you, sir. We ask that all in attendance please set your cellphones to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers the public two opportunities to speak during the meeting. Comments during the first public comment period should be limited to three minutes each and must be directly issue oriented with the agenda items for this particular meeting. The second public comment period is at the end of the meeting and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control of. During the second public comment period, citizens can address the Board for up to five minutes each. Citizen speakers will be acknowledged in the order in which they signed up to speak and will address all comments to the Board as a whole and not to one individual Commissioner. Speakers will address the Board from the speaker's podium at the front of the room and will begin their remarks by stating their name and their address. Discussion between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Public comment is not intended to require the Board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation. Any comments where the primary purpose is to promote a business or a candidacy shall not be allowed. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules and procedures, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioner comment period on the agenda. That'll be at the end of the meeting. With no other items to be considered, I would like a motion to adopt the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item two, approval of the items on the consent agenda. Is there any Commissioner that would like to have anything removed on the consent agenda and placed at the end of the meeting to be discussed separately?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, Mr. Manager, we at the public comment section already?
Yes.
Okay, I think we're going now to presentations, which would be the Onslow and Craven County Veterans Outreach Project. I think that Ms. Singleton? Singleton, I'm sorry. Used to have a person that worked for me named Singleton, so it was easy to make that mistake. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, and Vice Chairman. My name is LeVey Wallace Singleton. I come to you from Craven County, 401-9 Connor Grant Road in New Bern, North Carolina, and I bring you greetings. I'm here tonight to talk to you about a partnership that Craven County has with Onslow County. And I'm sorry they did not tell me how to work this, so... We do have a slide presentation? Is that correct? We do things a little bit different in Craven County, but if you could...
Sure, just a bit. Well, that's the next agenda. Did you send it in to us?
Yes.
Okay.
Was it sent in?
Yes.
Marie, Peggy?
We've just sent in a gentleman.
Well, I'll tell you what, I'm retired military, U.S. Navy, air traffic controller. And we proceed accordingly. Yes, sir. Okay, Craven and Onslow County partnered together for a grant with the USDA NIFA program, the National Institute of Food and Agriculture. Thank you. It is called the Veterans Outreach Project to develop beginning farmers, growing the next generation of farmers. As you well know, being in a military community, many of our military members are returning and they're looking to different industries to make a living after they transition from the military. We want to make sure that in the same instance where we transition them into industrial jobs, into executive positions, we also provide them a smooth transition into farming or ranching. And that's what this program will do. As you know, Craven County has MCAS Cherry Point. Onslow County is blessed with two bases, with New River and also Camp Lejeune. So we looked at this issue of having the veterans on the base and went to the USDA with a proposal using the Onslow County Incubator Farm and the organization that I founded, Veterans Employment Base Camp in Organic Garden in New Bern. Between the two of our organizations, we will be providing veterans a transition program that will allow them to at least get their feet wet into farming. We'll be using the 17-acre farm that Onslow County has and also the 1 1/2 acre farm that I have in New Bern in order to train these veterans to know what they need as far as acquiring a farm business, working with animals if they decide to be ranchers, or working in another agricultural field, because there are many jobs in agriculture, not just farming and ranching. So that is the program that we have developed. It's a three-year collaborative project. We've been awarded $281,000, $281,659,000 to run this program. And believe it or not, that might not be enough, but I'm not here to ask for money. So we are looking to other grant resources for other things that we think we might need. But what I did want to do is come in and make sure that you're aware of the various programs and the different collaborations and partnerships that are happening behind the scenes for military veterans. So that's all that I have right now. If you have any questions about our program, we probably will be coming back in with an update. We may be looking at a funding request later on, but I would like to recognize some of my cohorts in crime. Ms. Peggy Gardner here from Cooperative Extension. We have our Board President, Mr. Anthony Harrison, who came out of Craven County, and Marie Bowman, who works in Onslow County. And she will be a big part of what we are trying to do with these veterans. So I thank you for your time, and I'll entertain any questions that you may have at this point.
We thank you for being here and thank you for doing something for our veterans. It means a whole lot to this whole Board, so thank you.
Thank you.
Has this program ever been done in any other part of the state, or is this the first time?
This is the first time in North Carolina. And that's a great question. This is a pilot program that's going out by the USDA. So what the USDA did, they looked at what we were doing in Craven County and also in Onslow County and said, hey, let's see if you can do more that we can replicate in other areas. And so we were one of the junior organizations in their meeting that we got the fewest amount of funds, but I figure if we can show off, we can get more funding.
Thank you, Ms. Singleton.
Thank you so much.
Very good information. The next item is Onslow Memorial 2018 Annual Audit Presentation. I think that's Mr. Leader.
My name's Kevin Leader. I'm with Clifton Larson Allen out of Raleigh, North Carolina, here to present a summary of the 2018 audit for the Authority. We've had the opportunity to meet, of course, with the Finance Committee and with the Board of the Authority and go over the results, and so I wanted to provide a summarized version for you this evening. I believe you have a copy already, which you've received. So we did issue what we call an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That's a clean opinion, says that based on the work that we did, you know, the financial results of the Authority are fairly stated, materially correct. As part of the audit, we received full cooperation from management and no difficulties encountered in performing the audit, so we do appreciate the help that they provided during the audit process. As far as the financial results, a summary of the financial results is as follows. The revenues, when you compare the fiscal year ended September 30, 2018, to the prior year of '17, revenues were down about a half a percent when you're comparing the two years. A couple of things driving that decrease. One is, you know, as all hospitals are seeing, there continues to be pressure on reimbursement rates from payers, very minimal increases and in some cases decreases, as the case may be and as the payer may be. During fiscal '18, the Authority also experienced an increase in bad debt as a percent of their gross revenues. It went from 6 1/2% last year to 8.3% of gross revenues in the current year. That's about a $10 million increase in bad debts that the Authority experienced. On the operating expenses side, expenses were up about 3.7% compared to last year, driven by inflation among other factors, but certainly some growth in salaries and benefits as well. At the end of the day, the operating loss was about $13.9 million for the fiscal year compared to $7.6 million in 2017. As if, you know, to top it all off, you know, the hurricane hit right there at the end of the year, as I know you are all aware, and so management estimated about a $2.5 million loss in revenues due to the results of the hurricane, and that has been broken out and reflected separately in the financial statements as well as an unusual or special item down below the operating results. So as far as the audit approach goes, again, we did perform a risk-based audit. We focus our areas on the area that we perceive to be the biggest risks. We believe that we addressed the risk, and at the end of the day, we're very comfortable that there are no bias in any of the numbers or any of management's estimates in getting to those numbers. So I'm gonna pause there and want to make sure we entertain any questions.
I've got one that has popped up that I probably need to ask you, but I know you do other hospitals, y'all do other audits on other hospitals, but with this new state treasurer, state treasurer proposal on reduced reimbursements for hospitals, what kind of impact is that gonna have on community hospitals like Onslow and smaller community hospitals and maybe some bigger hospitals also?
Yeah, well, yep, to the extent, I mean, we're seeing it everywhere, and again, you know, that proposal, you know, I know they've just kind of gone through and selected some of the firms that'll be administering that program, but so it's a little early certainly to tell. But what we're seeing everywhere is continued pressure on reimbursement rates. It doesn't matter whether it's Medicaid, state plans, Medicare, or even commercial payers, military payers, what have you. We're just seeing that pressure everywhere, and so what we're seeing is it's not gonna get any easier, and especially with the, on the bad debt side, we continue to see more, you know, increased out-of-pocket deductibles, more out-of-pocket costs to the patient, and we're just continuing to see a combination of a decrease in reimbursement rates as well as an increase in bad debts everywhere. And I think this plan is gonna, or, you know, what we think will be the plan is just gonna be that, continue that trend.
Is that gonna lend a lot of providers in an out-of-network situation if they don't comply, or?
I don't know about that. I'm not sure about that. I think, you know, I think that's, again, that's yet to be determined. I'm not sure the, I have not heard that that would be the case yet.
Okay.
Yep.
That's all I have right now.
Okay.
Any other Board members have any other questions? That's it for now.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to item C, which is the Onslow County Audit for Fiscal Year of 2018. Mr. McNish.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Want to start off by thanking Dave McColl and his group in Finance for helping us get through the audit, getting us the information we needed to complete the audit. As you know, the process is comprehensive, resulting in an extensive document. This was also our first year performing the audit for Onslow County, and that's always a get-to-know-each-other period in terms of us learning the ins and outs of finance. And so, again, appreciation to Mr. McColl and the Finance Department for getting us through the process. Mr. Chairman, if it's all right, I was just gonna make a few brief comments about the audit, start off with some results from the General Fund, and then talk very briefly about the three reports that we issued, and then also just briefly describe some of our findings and recommendations that we had as a result of the audit process. So in terms of the General Fund, just looking strictly at revenues, revenues were about $192 million, and that was less than the prior year by about $2.2 million or about 1%. On the expenditure side, expenditures of about $198 million exceeded the prior year by about $1.4 million or less than 1%. So in terms of the change in General Fund fund balance, since you had expenditures exceeding revenues by about $6.4 million, that was the approximate amount that fund balance reduced, and that was compared to a reduction of about $2.8 million in the prior year. So after transfers to and from other funds, fund balance decreased by about $5.7 million compared to a decrease of about $3.47 in the prior year. So where does that leave you with fund balance, or more specifically, available fund balance, which for the county, I think y'all look at that as those amounts in fund balance that are available in that, even if they are committed by exercising certain activities on the part of the Commissioners, that can also be reversed so that those funds become available by an act of the Commission. So that's why I think you would end up having approximately $47 million in what would be considered available fund balance for all those categories that are committed, assigned, or unassigned. So there are a few, what we would call, I guess, kind of benchmarks that, for instance, the Government Financial Officers Association, they basically recommend that you have available fund balance of no less than two months. And so based on, if you took the average expenditures for the county based on 2018, that would be a burn rate of about $16.5 million. So that would still be almost three months of available fund balance that you would have based on the average monthly expenditures as they'd be reflected for 2018. The LGC, Local Government Commission, they also recommend that you have a fund balance of at least 8% of general fund expenditures. So you're well within that at roughly about 24%, depending on how you calculate it for the county. So just a couple of kind of litmus tests that are out there within government in terms of fund balance for a county government. So I guess one thing to keep in mind, of course, those funds, most of those funds, y'all as the governing body have designated those, so they would only become available if y'all were to no longer earmark those and reverse other decisions that were made for those funds. So just, I guess, important to keep in mind that while those are quote-unquote "available", those are for the most part funds that you've, under your control, you've earmarked for certain activities, missions within the county. So just kind of a snapshot, just to give you an idea of fund balance in terms of availability as a result, or as of June 30, 2018. Real quickly on the audit process, of course, you engage us to come in and give our opinion as with the hospital audit as to whether the comprehensive annual financial report is fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So, and that is what we did, like, as mentioned previously with the hospital, we also gave the county an unmodified opinion, and that's where you want to be, a clean opinion, in terms of us coming in and based on all our audit testing, we're able to issue opinion that the financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So we're not performing a fraud audit, but we are performing that audit to give comfort to, whether it's granting agencies or bondholders, people that want to look at and assess the creditworthiness of the county using this document. And they're gonna rely on our opinion as to whether they're looking at something that's fairly presented. So management's responsibility is to present and prepare the financial statements in accordance with GAAP or generally accepted accounting principles, and to maintain sufficient internal controls over the day-to-day processes that are happening in finance, anything from approving disbursements to performing monthly bank reconciliations, all those things that happen throughout the year to indicate that there are good internal controls in place for the county as they're running their financial operations. So again, we've expressed an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. Now, as a governmental entity, Onslow County is also, they're subject to government auditing standards, and that's where we perform the audit in accordance with those standards. And one thing that we consider are those internal controls over financial reporting. So we look at those controls. Part of what we're obligated to do is if we have findings or recommendations within the framework of government auditing standards, we're required to report those to you. We had a few of those findings and recommendations that are included in the report. And what we look for is, we'll come back in the subsequent year, look at those, the action plan that management has already provided to us, to say how they're gonna address those issues, and we follow up on those to see where those are addressed. So that's part of our process in terms of performing the audit from year after year is looking at those recommendations and making sure that those are addressed. And finally, in terms of reports, the county engages in federal and state expenditures. In other words, funded by state and federal programs, like most North Carolina counties, y'all do that. There are a lot of conditions and compliance requirements, as you know, that come along with those funds. So what we're required to do is to perform a separate audit, called a single audit, over those grant programs, those major programs, both on the federal and state level. And what we're looking for is that the county has materially complied with those requirements. So we did perform that audit. We, again, were able to issue an unmodified opinion, and again, that's where you want to be, that materially those compliance requirements were adhered to. Now, we did have some findings and recommendations related to that single audit, and again, we'll follow up on those with the subsequent year's audit to see where those were addressed. So the nature of the findings that we did have, in terms of accounting for construction progress or construction accounting, we want to make sure that items that are included in construction in progress, that those are gonna be items that are actually capitalized and not expensed, so that's one thing that we want to follow up on, making sure that retainage payable associated with construction progress or construction projects is recorded. So those items were both fixed, but those were items that we identified, that we want to make sure those are addressed before we come in to perform the audit process. Grant rev, excuse me, grant revenue recognition, we want to make sure that revenue is recognized for those grants, basically as those compliance requirements or those performance obligations are met. So again, that was corrected by management, but we want to make sure that that continues to be adhered to in terms of correct reporting. DSS eligibility, we had a couple of recommendations there in terms of making sure we've got proper documentation to demonstrate that beneficiaries were eligible for those benefits. Of course, the state is gonna be paying very close attention to that, so a couple of recommendations there to make sure that that proper documentation is maintained. And then in terms of state programs, we had one state program that we want to make sure the expenditures are reported. Usually the compliance requirements for any given grant will have certain monthly or quarterly or annual reporting requirements, want to make sure those are properly addressed. So again, the Finance Department management, DSS has been very responsive to us in terms of giving us a corrective action plan. That's what we want to see. We want to see that, you know, as soon as we're leaving the field, that those items are being addressed. And again, we'll follow up to make sure that we've got concrete, concrete response on those as we go forward with your audit process. So overall, especially considering a first year, the challenges that the county had with the storm, also a couple of new accounting requirements, I think the county did a really good job in getting us through the process, and so I think a good audit process for this first time out. Mr. Chairman, any questions that the Commissioners might have, would be glad to take right now if that's suitable.
I don't have any. We have a really good management team that really keeps their thumb on expenditures and revenue, and we, I think our management team has done a good job, and that's why we had a 24% fund balance instead of, you know, way down the list to eight. I know a lot of towns and cities are really touching that, closer to that 8% fund balance, and that can be kind of dangerous, especially when we had such a situation here with hurricane damage and all the expenditures that we had to put money up front. So we keep that in mind, and we always are thinking about issues that come along that's gonna, unsuspected items, like the passing of Congressman Walter Jones. You know, the governor's gonna order another special election, and that's probably gonna be $1,000 to $200,000. We don't have the numbers yet, but that could be money that wasn't budgeted for, but from the management team, keep an eye on things. That's where we always have a safety net for hurricanes and such things like that.
Yes, sir. And I think you illustrate the point that each local government, each county is different. Certainly a coastal county is gonna have different fund balance requirements that they're gonna exercise based on what management and the Commissioners decide, and so it's not a one-size-fits-all situation as far as fund balance policy. Yes, sir.
Does the Board have any questions for our auditor? Well, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Next item number five is a public hearing, and I'm gonna turn that over to Mr. Cottin, our county manager, to begin that process.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have several public hearings this evening. The first is rezoning case, PREZ, Tech 2019, Tech 0003. I will first call on Mr. Ben Warren, Assistant County Manager, to provide a staff introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Cottin. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. For your consideration this evening, staff has proposed an amendment to establish a US-17 thoroughfare overlay district. The thoroughfare overlay district amendment consists of two parts. One would be an amendment to the official zoning map... One would be an amendment to the official zoning map for Onslow County establishing the overlay itself, and the second would be an amendment to the Onslow County zoning ordinance to establish the verbiage that would accompany the overlay district. Just to give you an idea of the areas that would be inside the, or overlaid by the thoroughfare overlay district, there are really four sections along US-17, and this is just a general snapshot of the entire 17 corridor. Give you a more detailed look at each of these areas, starting from the most northern going to southern. The first area would essentially start at the Mayville bypass, and it extends south to the entrance to Huffman Forest. And as you can, just looking at the various zoning districts that would fall within this section of the overlay district, the kind of lime green color that you see is the rural agricultural, the brighter blue is existing highway business, and then further south, the purple is an R5 high-density residential. Traveling south, once you exit Huffman Forest from that area until you reach the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city of Jacksonville, would be the second leg. Within this area, it primarily consists of highway business and rural agricultural. And then there will be a break until you get to the southern limits of the city of Jacksonville extraterritorial jurisdiction. This third leg would pick up at that location and extend to the point where US-17 enters the base properties. And throughout this section, we have a mixture of rural agricultural, some R30 low-density residential, and a little bit more highway business. And then the final leg would be just south of NC Highway 210, and it would extend from that location south to the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the town of Holly Ridge, and the predominant zoning district in this section is highway business. So in addition to the overlay district itself, there would be a zoning text amendment, and would establish a section seven, or 710, which would establish the US-17 thoroughfare overlay district. Basically, the district itself would extend 300 feet on either side of the US-17 right-of-way, and the underlying zoning districts that are in place right now would still apply. This would just be an added layer of regulation on top of the existing regulation within those 300-foot sections. And basically, the restrictions that would be in place would affect the aesthetic qualities of the corridor and would affect the uses that are listed here, basically prohibiting things such as junkyards, salvage yards, and similar uses, and various types of outdoor storage, being things such as inoperable motor vehicles, storage of indoor furniture, and outdoor storage of construction or man-made debris within 200 feet of the right-of-way. And talking about the storage of construction materials, this is not something necessarily on an active construction site, this would be something that would be an ongoing, basically zoning violation-type issue, or something that creates visual clutter along the US-17 In looking at the comprehensive plan, the proposed amendments are consistent with the guidance and the expressed intent of the comprehensive plan regarding enhancing the aesthetic qualities of our primary corridors. And in looking at the reasonableness and public interest, the proposed amendments protect the public interest by establishing enhanced aesthetic qualities and standards along the US-17 corridor. And this was reviewed by the planning board at their February meeting, and the planning board did make a unanimous recommendation for approval. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Cotton for the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. I will now open the public hearing, allowing the applicant to make a statement. No one has signed up for the public hearing, so I will make a call to the audience. If anyone is interested in speaking on rezoning case, P R E Z, 20190003, please approach the podium. Seeing no one approach the podium, I will now close the public hearing. The item is available for Commissioner discussion.
Okay. Have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Go here a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion. Now, Ben, I'd like to ask one question about this. The restrictions were junkyards, salvage yards, and there was about four different things now. Those things are not, they're restricted for future, but any existing ones, they still live their life out?
Yes, sir, that is correct. They would be grandfathered.
Anybody that's got some, I don't know that they do or don't, but if they've got them now, they stay in place until they outlive, and then there won't be any new categories like that, approved?
Yes, sir, that's true.
zoning.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all I have. Anybody else? We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. We have Section B rezoning, again.
Mr. Chairman, as it relates to Section B, at this point, I'd make a motion that the board allow me to be recused from any debate or vote on that matter based on a conflict arising out of my employment.
I will second that motion.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, you are excused.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I'll turn it back over to Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The next item is text amendment case, ZTA, tech 2018, tech 0004. I will now ask Mr. Warren to provide a staff introduction.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cotton. In staff's evaluation of our current zoning ordinance and our current zoning districts throughout the county, it was identified that zoning applying to adult uses is extremely restricted as it applies right now. Currently, adult uses are only allowed in the heavy industrial zoning district, and there are three areas within the county that carry that zoning district, one of those being Burton Industrial Park. And as such, because of the constitutional protections for adult uses, staff began to look to identify potential ways to provide additional opportunities for these uses throughout the county, and so there are a couple of zoning ordinance amendments that are proposed this evening to rectify the situation, to try to provide additional opportunities and meet the constitutional requirements for these uses. So there are two sections of the ordinance that are proposed for amendment, the first being Article 19, the Table of Uses, and basically, this would allow adult uses as a use permitted by right with special requirements in a highway business zoning district. The second would be amending the special requirements section of the ordinance, Section 1406, and would basically establish a new section for adult businesses with two different sets of regulation. The first would be that they would be allowed within the highway business zoning district, subject to the fact that they would only be allowed in the US-17 thoroughfare overlay district, provided the entire structure is wholly contained within the overlay district boundaries. The second part would be that adult uses are subject to the requirements of the ordinance to regulate adult businesses and sexually-oriented businesses in Onslow County, which was adopted on September 21, 1992. And the planning board reviewed this item at their February meeting, and they made a unanimous recommendation for approval. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Cotton for the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. At this time, I will open the public hearing. No one has signed up, so I will make a call to the audience. If anyone would like to speak on text amendment case, ZTA, tech 2018, tech 0004, please approach the podium. Seeing no one approach the podium, I'm...
Some of you already know the concern that the landowners up and down Highway 17 is going through at the present time. I have a $300,000, $350,000 home on 17. I've been living there for 45 years, raised four kids, three boys and a girl, in center school and college from my home. We've never had water flooded before. They're claiming it's wetland now, DOT is, it turned all the water in on me. They got me down in the gutter about 40 foot from where the ramp comes in down to my mailbox coming into my house. They've turned all the water in. Their ditches that they have downside the new highways is, I have two ditches at my place, and my ditch is lower than theirs, what they call, down their highway, and they're doing nothing about it. What is this zoning going to do for us landowners? It already said it goes back 200 feet, and my lot, where my home is, is not 200 feet deep, so I can't have my car sitting in my yard, because we have three or four or more when the family comes over. And I need to know what the zoning is going to do for the landowners. Now, DOT has done, I have land in Onslow, I have land in Jones County, and they did considerable amount of damage in Jones County, over $400,000 worth of damage to my farm, and I have a ranch, and I have cattle on it, and it's destroying me. And I need to know what zoning is going to do me in front of my house with a water situation, whatever. Any questions for any of you? Now, I know Commissioner Buchanan, I think I've been on board with the Water Department when they was praying to bring in that water down 17 and whatever, and you helped us on that, get it by the house, because they just went behind us and went down where they'd had more customers, and we fought to get the water out on 17 in front of my house for a couple, three years, but we got that at last. Now I need something done on this other, if y'all have anything to do with. And Mr. Bright, I know you've been, I've called you a few times on this situation, and I think you and your wife had been out and seen what I'm saying, and they got me in the mountains now, because in front of my driveway, it's at least 20 to 25 foot high, where you come off the bluff and go right down in my yard. You can't get a trailer or a truck in there to bring in lawn mower, whatever. We had this park up over, on the hill up on 17, the new highway they built it. So if you have, any of you have not been out there to see that, please take my invitation to come out and take a look at it. My son has property in Onslow and Jones, and it done the same thing, they flooded his house out on Highway 17 before you get to my house. He's got property on the right there, then he's got land on, in Jones County. And I just don't know what's going to happen, because I know I pay enough taxes on the properties for somebody, and I'd just like to know what the zoning is going to do for us. Can y'all tell me?
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lassiter. We'll see.
Sir?
Thank you for coming up.
And I couldn't hear y'all out there, I couldn't hear none of y'all up here.
I'll have Mr. Warren meet with you.
Sir?
I will have Mr. Warren, can you raise your hand, Ben? I'll have him meet with you and share with you how the zoning changes will or will not, or may or may not affect your specific property.
I know Mr. Harry Brown is working with us also.
Okay.
And I hope something done soon.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
In fact, I've spent quite a few dollars on that house already trying to save it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Woodrow.
If anyone else would like to speak on text amendment case, ZTA, 20180004, please approach the podium. Seeing no one approach the podium, I will close the public hearing. The item is available for Commissioner discussion and questions.
Motion? Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we adopt the statement of consistency and approve the proposed map and text amendment in order to ensure that the county zoning ordinance complies with the applicable constitutional standards while continuing to promote the health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the citizenry of Onslow County.
Second the motion.
Second that.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Mr. Warren, or either Mr. Seales, could you explain to the public what restrictions are already in place under the 1992 ordinances, so the public will be aware of the restrictions already in place?
Yes, sir. The 1992 ordinance establishes a set of general setbacks from adult uses, and those setbacks are 1,000 feet from any occupied dwelling, 1,000 feet from religious institutions, 1,000 feet from a park or other swimming pool or other type use, and 1,000 feet from additional or existing other adult businesses. So it's, really creates those separational standards and provides additional standards that restrict the uses. With the proposed amendment established in an overlay district, it would also limit the areas in which they could be located, along some of our areas that are well-lit, well-protected, in addition to those setback standards.
In other words, while we're providing some location that could be used for this use, we have regulations in place that is going to not allow us to have a row of adult businesses coming into Onslow County or anyplace else in Onslow County, because they'll have to be separated by 1,000 feet.
Yes, sir. Even though we are opening up to additional areas, because of the setbacks and because of the restrictive nature of the thoroughfare overlay district, it is still a very heavily regulated use, and would be very limited areas in which it could locate.
Thank you. And I wonder if we could have our county attorney explain why this is required that we provide this area?
Yes, sir. The Supreme Court has said that adult businesses fall as protected speech, so First Amendment, there has to be some area in which they can operate, and this would allow an area for those businesses to operate while maintaining Onslow County's control over those secondary effects, which is what you want to prevent, which are the crime and things of that nature. So Onslow County is still limiting where these businesses can operate, it's just choosing where they're going to be rather than them just be splattered throughout the county.
And they still have to be approved by the planning board before a business could actually open?
Yes, sir. There's still a permitting process, and if the underlying zoning is not a highway business zoning district, then it would go before the planning board and this Board of Commissioners for consideration of a rezoning as well.
This works to bring us, maybe not compliance, but to the constitutional standards that we need to meet as we move forward.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Warren? Before we vote on it, I'd like to address some of Mr. Woodrow's concerns. Woodrow, you know I've been out to your house.
I can't, I can't hear you.
Well, I'm going to tell the audience, I've been out to your house, and I've looked at the situation, and what happened, members of the board, is the Department of Transportation, during the bypass operation that bypasses Belgrade and Mayville, the Department of Transportation come along and they constructed, it started right in front of his house where the bypass goes around Belgrade, and it started right in front of Mr. Woodrow's house, and he's right, I mean, everything he said is absolutely true. They built the highway up to 15, I don't know what the distance is, but it's a lot higher than the property, and Mr. Woodrow's house now is taking all the water from the runoff, and it's going downhill and ponding on his property, and not by his fault, it's not his fault. And I have contacted Senator Brown, contacted the Phil Shepherd, and all of our local delegation that I could to see if they could figure out a way to help his property get drained and keep the water from coming off his property. He actually has water during rainy, real heavy rain season that actually runs under his foundation, and he's had to install pumps under his house in order to pump the water out. And then there's another issue about the septic tank, you know, being overrun with inundated water, extra water. He had none of these problems before the bypass project started. But to answer your question, Mr. Woodrow, I don't think the zoning, what we did here tonight, that don't have anything to do with your, there's nothing that's going to help you do on your drainage. I think where we need to go is to maybe get the DOT to try to see what they can do to help him out. Other than that, I... Other than that, I, I don't know what else. I mean, the county, there's nothing, we don't have a program for that. I think Tony Paget has been out and actually looked at your property. And you're not the only one. There's some people down the road in Belgrade that's got some similar problems too that I went and looked at. Edward Earl Parker and you, and there's been several more that I actually went out and looked, looked at the problem. But I surely understand your situation and I wish there was a solution that this board could help you with, but there's nothing that I know of that we can do. Now, you can talk, I mean, Ben, Mr. Warren might be able to talk to you and see what other alternatives that, you know, planning and development can help you with. And we'll do everything we can to help you. I promise you that. I'd entertain a, a vote now. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 All except for Mr. Shanahan. He recused himself. Give it up to item number six, fiscal year 2018 amended audit contract. Mr. McColl.
Good evening, Board of Commissioners. The item we have before you is the fiscal year 2018 amended audit contract. As required by the local government commission, any audit that's submitted to them after the December 1st, 2018, needs to have an amended contract. That needs to come to the board, it needs to be, needs to be approved by the board and also signed by, by the chairman. The reason why the audit was submitted after December 1st, 2018 was due to the disruption of Hurricane Florence. And with that said, I respectfully request that you consider approval of the amended audit contract with Elliot Davis for fiscal year 2018 audit and authorize the chairman to sign the contract on behalf of the county. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you have.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you, sir. Final offer on real property, Ms. Laura Jones.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners. On January 23rd, the board accepted an offer from a citizen to purchase a parcel of land. The parcel number is 040911 and the offer was in the amount of $830. It's about .09 of an acre in size. A public notice was advertised on Daily News, however, we did not receive any upset offers. Therefore, the final high offer is being brought back to you for final consideration. It's respectfully requested that the board consider the final offer in the amount of $830 for parcel 040911. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. A land offer on item C, Ms. Jones?
Yes, sir. Six C is a new offer that we received for parcel 009247. The offer was in the amount of $3,772.18. The property is .08 of an acre in size and it's located at 110 Darden Street. And again, we would go through the negotiated offer advertisement and upset bid process on this. It's respectfully requested that the board declare the property as surplus, consider the initial offer of $3,772.18, and if approved, authorize the purchasing director to conduct the sale.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Eyes have it. Thank you. Section D, Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation Award, Sheriff Miller.
Good evening, Honorable Board of Commissioners. My pleasure here tonight to give you some good news. The good news is that the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation Board of Directors has awarded the Onslow County Sheriff's Office a grant for receiving a Lumma Craft boat with motor, a trailer, life vests, and accessories. The grant was requested. It was approved. The gain to our county is $6,278.28. I'll bring it to the board because this then becomes county property and requires your approval for the sheriff's office to accept this grant. There are stipulations. The stipulations are positive. They are for life saving, for searches, for rescues. We're going to work with our EMT partners, with our fighter partners in reference to that. And once we receive the equipment, we will let the public know that this is a good thing and the county gained from it. So I respectfully request that the board approve this grant because it will become county property.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Is this an asset that you would have utilized in the previous hurricane?
It is, Mr. Commissioner, it absolutely is. And as you know, we can never have too much equipment because a lot of times during a storm, there are different parts of the area that need to be serviced. And we obviously want to service all of them.
I know you have a dive team. Will this boat be an assistance to your dive team?
It would be very beneficial for the training of the dive team. Just a couple of days ago, we actually assisted the Jacksonville Police Department with evidence search. However, in this particular case, that boat would not be used for that. It would be used for rescue operations.
Yeah, they were searching retention pond.
That's right. And we have other assets that take care of those.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Sheriff. I'd like to ask the board if they want to entertain a short break or recess. We've got it at the hour.
Make a motion to recess.
Okay. It's going to take about 10 minutes. If everybody be back in here right at 10 minutes. Called a meeting back to order. I think our next item on the agenda is item E, merger with the Southeastern North Carolina Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Mr. Norman Bryson, thank you, sir.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners. The item we will consider is to merge the county's multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan into the Southeastern North Carolina Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan, which contains Pender, New Hanover, and Brunswick Counties. A hazard mitigation plan is a federally required document in which communities evaluate its natural hazards and sets goals to mitigate those hazards. If a community does not have a federally approved hazard mitigation plan, then the community is not eligible for federal disaster relief funds. Ie, in this situation, the money that we have spent out for debris removal and emergency preparedness during Hurricane Florence, we would not be able to recoup any of those funds without having an approved hazard mitigation plan. By consolidating our hazard mitigation plan into a regional plan, then we will be eligible to be part of a state grant that will assist with the writing and approval of the plan. Onslow County is the only county in the state that is not merged into a regional plan. When considering which regional plan to merge with, we feel that Pender, New Hanover, and Brunswick Counties are the closest in geography and natural hazards to ourselves. To merge our new, our hazard mitigation plan with the regional plan, we would need to adopt a resolution to participate in the regional plan and send a letter to Pender County requesting their consideration to allow Onslow County access into the regional plan. Pender County is the host of the regional plan and for the state grant as well for the writing of the plan. There is no cost to the county for entering into this agreement. The actions respectfully request the Board of Commissioners consider joining other jurisdictions in our southeastern region of North Carolina as part of the Southeastern Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan and have approved to pass the resolution and authorize the letter approved to be sent to the Pender County Board of Commissioners.
Motion to approve.
Make a motion. Simmons.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
So we already have a hazard mitigation plan.
Yes, sir. We have one that has to be approved every five years. We have gone through in the last three years of having the plan. We're coming up on our expiration date to have the current one expire. And by joining in with this regional plan, this will actually extend a period of our time. We'll actually get an additional year in before we actually have to go through with the approval. The biggest thing is by going in with the other partners, we will be access to a state grant to help pay for the writing of this plan. It will take about a year to actually go through and write the plan just for ourselves.
So it's still going to be our Onslow County Hazard Mitigation Plan?
Yes, sir. It, we will still have a big piece of this plan. It'll be part of the annex. However, we will just be an additional annex to this plan and we'll meet all the federal
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, John.
Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, I think Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'd like to cover the Onslow County Equalization and Review Board.
Backup.
Sorry.
Item A, 7A.
Yes, sir. The current term of the Board of ENR has expired, well, does expire February 28th of this year. The current members are Mr. Philip Mercer, Mr. Todd Daughtry, Mr. Dennis Bragg, Mr. Charles Rawls, and Mr. Roger Riggs. They all have expressed an interest and desire to continue serving on the board for the next term and have provided citizen participation applications. Mr. Mercer is willing to serve as chairman of the board. It's respectfully requested that the Commissioners consider the reappointment of Mr. Philip Mercer, Todd Daughtry, Dennis Bragg, Charles Rawls, and Roger Riggs for a one-year term expiring February 28th of 2020. And appoint Mr. Philip Mercer as chairman for the one-year term expiring on February 28th, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, now juvenile crime prevention council. Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. There, there is currently an open vacancy on the board. And Mr. Dennis Keith Williams has expressed an interest in the appointment and has provided a citizen participation application. The application is on file and has been certified by the clerk's office. It's respectfully requested that the Commissioners consider the appointment of Mr. Dennis Keith Williams in the Commissioners appointee category for a remaining two-year term expiring February 28th of 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we don't have anything that was moved to the consent agenda under item eight. Item nine would be public comment.
Yes, sir, we do have, we do have one. This is the sub-second public comment period. In accordance with the board's adopted rules of procedures, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioner comment period on the agenda. Comments may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. During the second public comment period, citizens can address the board for up to five minutes each. The only person who has signed up is Mr. Keith Williams. Mr. Williams, you have the podium for a time period not to exceed five minutes.
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners, I am Keith Williams, County Executive with the Brigade Boys and Girls Club here in Onslow County. And let me first state, I want to thank you so much for allowing me to be here and sharing just a couple of things with you. And first of all, I did not know that that vote was taking place tonight, but I thank you for your vote. I am Dennis Keith Williams. That will be serving on the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. First of all, let me say, say thank you so much for your support and your faith in what you have seen in us with the Brigade Boys and Girls Club and the support that you've given us in the past. I'd like to just give you an update on what happened in 2018, since you all did support us through 2018. In 2018, the Brigade Boys and Girls Club served 1,008 children at eight sites throughout the county. And that's one thing that we're, they're very proud of is the 1,008 is a, is a strong number. We have another location in, in New Hanover, which is much larger. They served 1,004. So we were able to do 1,008 here. As you know, 2018 was a very eventful year. Brought on a lot of challenges for everyone and it did for us at Brigade Boys and Girls Club as well. One thing that we did do was when we, we met as a board right after the hurricane, we sat down and said, what can we do as a club to support the community and the children of Onslow County? And so what we did was when we sat down in that boardroom, we said, first thing that we're going to do is we're not going to charge anybody for our services as long as they're out of school. So we set up camp at four sites throughout the county. And we set those sites up. We didn't charge anything to our existing members, nor did we charge new members anything. We waived the membership fees for our existing members in the club. So what I'd like to do is just share briefly with you some of the numbers that, that we faced during Storm Camp is what we called it and what we provided with your support. During the Storm Camp, we served 2,460 free meals for the children of Onslow County. We served 4,186 free snacks during that time. And we also served 150 new children that were not members of the Brigade Boys and Girls Club prior to the storm. The total that we did serve for those eight weeks, and these were children that were out of school, was 510 children. And one thing that we're proud of is there was many parents that were out there. They were trying to get their estimates and, and get things done. They were trying to find out if they had a job to go back to. The last thing they wanted was the children home in their hair when they were out of school. So we were so proud that we were able to open the doors and give the support. We provided emergency recovery programming, programming of 27,400 hours. So we were able to do that as well. And we're going to always stick by our motto that great futures start in our club. So that's just, I just want to give you a quick update of what we did with your support. And as you go through your budget year this year, if you find that you can support us, we would love to have that. Is there any questions for us? We'd just like to say thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else, sir? All right, we'll move on to managers' comments. Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'll, I will be brief. Our functional specific group meetings have convened and I anticipate that they will wrap up their work in, in relation to Hurricane Florence. And we will take the input we've received from all those individual group meetings and develop a single plan that we'll present, of course, to the Commissioners and to the larger community as well as our partners that we turn to in, in times of natural disaster. So I'm, I'm looking forward to bringing that back to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner comments? We'll start off with Commissioner Buchanan.
Thank you. Just a few things. I know there's going to be a lot of comments on the two ribbon cuttings that we had on Friday, which was the new courthouse and the crisis center. The new courthouse came as, to, as fruition through the Commissioners on the CIP projects that we put together years ago. And it's one of the last projects, one of the last projects that we had going, was an ongoing project, was the actual courthouse. And that comes back from Barbara Eichner and Jack Bright, myself, Lionel Midget and Bill Eichner, Bill, Bill Eichner, I'm right, Bill Keller, who sat on our boards. There was a CIP project that we put together and that was one of the last projects of that CIP. There's one more project out there for the new board to have to deal with and it's going to probably be the new museum and library. That's two, two of the big issues that we'll have forward. The crisis center, I won't say much about that. The five county Commissioners, there's seven of us up here now, but the five of us that really pushed hard earlier to get that to come to fruition. And you're going to hear some more about that from Commissioner Knapp, who has spearheaded that thing pretty much and has done quite a bit with that. But the rest of us, it took all five of us to get it started. He spearheaded it. I'm going to leave it at that and thank everybody for being here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Foster.
I think Commissioner Buchanan said, I know there's going to be a lot said about the crisis center and the ribbon cuttings. And my hat's off to this board. Commissioner Shanahan, I, we're not a part of that. We're just fortunate to be a part of that, that huge celebration and the ribbon cutting of that. And the hat's off to Commissioner Knapp for spearheading that. And I'm just proud to be part of a board that has that type of vision. to be part of a Board that has that type of vision to see what we need and then act on it. So my hat's off to the five members that made that take place. Our first responders, you know, unfortunately, on school campuses, we got to make phone calls for our first responders to come on and help us out in a situation. I just wanted to give a, a big thank you to Amanda Hurrel and Cecil Shepherd with Onslow County EMS that came out and helped us out a week or so ago, and it's, it's good seeing professionals at work and taking care of individuals, and what's a stressful situation for them to have someone show up and do such a wonderful job to take care of a child and then to, uh, um, take care of the parents when they arrive on scene. So, Mr. Bryson, please give them our, our thank you for their professionalism in, in that case. Mr. Williams, thank you. Appreciate it. Service to your community, service to our kids, and I don't know if there's a, an asset or a resource that's more important than the, the youth of our county. They're the future, and because we have people like yourself and others out there that are stepping to the plate to take a part in the growing of our greatest resource, my hat's off to you, and thank you for your time. Thanks for everybody for coming out tonight.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Knapp.
We had a lot accomplished last week, and, I mean, there's not really much to say. I agree with Commissioner Buchanan, and he said it best. We wouldn't have been able to get this done without all the Commissioners being on board with this project and pushing it, and they shared the same vision. Two and a half years or less is, is lightning speed for moving something, moving something through bureaucracy to get our DCIC up and running, our Dix Crisis Intervention Center. And there's one person, there's two people in here that, that absolutely deserve a round of applause, and that's Sherry Slater, the project lead, and of course, Mr. David Cotton, our county manager who oversaw everything. These two were aggressive. They, they took the idea, the concept, and ran with it, and I can't thank them enough. So I just want to give you guys a round of applause for what you guys did. It's a big deal for us. It, it is up and running. It'll be operational in about two to three weeks, Sherry, somewhere around there. There's some minor things that need to be done, but again, I'll say it's a huge, huge step for Onslow County in the right direction to tackle the opioid epidemic, and I'm just extremely proud that this project, to see the project start and to see it come to fruition. I just can't explain it enough. But I also want to thank the Board of Commissioners for supporting it, the five that were on this Board that, that shared the same visions, the same realization to get this done, and they backed it 150%, and then we've got our legislatures involved, and then we've got our partners, excuse me, involved from various counties and private entities, and I can't thank them enough. So we're, we're expecting good things, and hopefully, we'll be able to give the necessary treatment to those individuals that, that need it badly. And, you know, it's never, never too late, and we're starting someplace, and hopefully, this will evolve into a, into a bigger program. And Keith, thanks for coming out. I see Bill out there, too. I appreciate what you guys do for the Boys and Girls Brigade. I know you both personally. I know the, the passion that's in your heart for our kids, and I just want to say I thank you guys for coming up and giving us the numbers, and I was writing them down, and that's impressive, what you guys did even during the storm. So I appreciate everything you guys do, and I appreciate your friendship. Thanks for coming out. I don't have anything else to say. I just want to wish everybody a blessed night, be safe going home. Thanks for coming out, and we'll see you at the next meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Price.
One of the biggest challenges, the long-term challenges that is going to face Onslow County is school construction, and the state legislature just went back into session January 30th, I think it was, and I was encouraged to see that there's a lot of talk from, from the state legislature about aiding those high-growth counties in helping them with school construction. So you see the Speaker, Tim Moore, is supporting the bond, the statewide bond. It's been 23 years since the last time we had a statewide bond, and Senator Brown has introduced SB-5, an approach to school construction that is more of a pay-as-you-go. So we got both sides of the House talking about the need to help counties with school construction. I see that as a positive development, and so hopefully, something will come out of that, which will help Onslow County, which, which is one of the big areas that we will be needing some help in. So some type of compromise or either agreement on one method or the other. The good thing is that both sides are recognizing the problem, and so I wanted to inform you of that, and also to remind you that many people spoke last year during budget time with concern about the fact that we relied solely on property tax and that, or not solely on property tax, but primarily on property tax, and that sales tax was a better way of go, to go, and increasing the sales tax would be a, a more acceptable way of going. And so if you feel that way, contacting your state legislators, it would be the, the thing to do. They're in session now, and so if you want to let them know that you want to give the Board that as an option, you know, to Onslow County, then that would be something that you would need to inform our state delegation of. So I just wanted to let you know that I'm still thinking about it, and that hopefully, if you're, if you're considering that as one of the concerns that people brought up last year in the budget discussions, that you could contact those state reps. Other than that, have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Shanahan.
I'd just say, over the weekend, my family had an event that brought in several good friends of mine who had never been to Onslow County before, and they, they both flew into OAJ, the Albert Ellis Airport here in Onslow County, and they had nothing but wonderful things to say about that airport. And I think sometimes, being here, we kind of forget what a, a huge asset to that community, to our community that facility is, and so I would just encourage everyone locally that if, if you haven't used OAJ before, next time you plan your trip, consider using it. It's a, it's a wonderful facility.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Vice Chairman Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Being almost last, it's hard not to be repetitive, but I will say thank you again to, to Mr. Williams for being here, and I just, it's, it strikes me that every, almost every day or every few days, I hear of something else that, another issue that came up during the hurricane and was solved by some of our local nonprofit organizations, like the children being out of school. And, you know, it didn't occur to me, I don't have children in school, but the many parents who maybe couldn't go to work because their children were, were not in school, and I see that, you know, the Boys and Girls Club stepped up to try to help with that issue. And I just want to give a kudos to our nonprofits in Onslow County. They do so much to reach out to the community and solve problems and issues that, that we may not even think about, or we certainly don't have the resources and government to, to solve. So thank you again to the Boys and Girls Club for your help and in the community, and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, sir. We had a, a lot of good comments. My hat and heart goes out to the Walter Jones family. He passed away, and the state's in the process now of having the governor make a decision on the primary and the general election for replacement of Senator, I mean Congressman Walter B. Jones. He served a long time. He, I always had very, very good positive interaction with him. Been to his office in Washington, DC, and visited, visited a lot of times he was doing public comments and speech. So I'm hoping that we will get someone that will represent the county, our county, and have the passion that he had for our eastern region of the state. I do like to say thank you to Mr. Williams for your comments from the Boys and Girls Club. Money has always been a issue, and, you know, our, our budget is always tight, and it seems like our, the growth of the county is outpacing the revenue streams. So we're going to do what we can to look at all the nonprofits and not just the Boys and Girls Club, but the Red Cross, the United, I go on and on with the organizations that we, nonprofits that we fund that do a lot of work that we just can't do, and I, I reflect on what Vice Chairman Bennett said, there was a lot of organizations that just stepped up to the plate, churches that opened up food banks, they were cooking, they were providing supplies, they were providing food, they were providing shelter for the folks that were out of their homes, and they're still, we still trying to recover from that. And like our auditor that gave the audit report tonight, our county is in good shape, but it's in good shape because of the management team right over here and our assistant managers that's in the audience. They put together a, a budget that is sustainable and that we, that's workable, and also to take care of problems that arise like hurricanes, and actually, we had two events last year. We had a snowstorm in January where school was out considerable amount then, and power was out, and there was issues then with needs for public service. So I, I, my hat's off to the nonprofit groups that come. I wish there was more that we could do for Mr. Lassiter that spoke earlier about his home, but he's just a victim of progress and victim of construction, and I, I tried to figure out ways to help him on a county level, but I, I haven't been able to find anything yet. But I, I still appreciate him coming, so with that being said, I have a motion to adjourn.
Send move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All in favor?
Aye.